Good evening. Today is Monday, June 2nd, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. And first up on the agenda, item A is Mr. Kane, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, sir. Discount days with the Southside Landfill. The city of Pueblo and Waste Connection Southside Landfill partnered for 50% discounts on loads for city residents from June 2nd through June 14th. City residents must provide a valid photo ID, listing and address within city limits, or residents may provide other identification with the current utility bill to receive the discount. Accepted waste include solid waste, trash, yard trimmings, mattresses, or box springs. This offering is for city residents only. No businesses can receive the discount. All loads must be covered and secured to receive discount. Uncovered loads will be charged double the gate rate. Southside landfill is located three miles west of Pueblo Boulevard and Northern Avenue. Physical address is 5715 West State Highway 78. So if you missed our dump free dump day over the weekend, this is a good opportunity to go get rid of some trash. Friday, June 6th is summer kickoff with El Central del Quinto Bowl with free hot dogs and beverages, games, music, and more. Join Pueblo Parks and Rec from 12 to 2 PM at 609 East Sixth Street. More info available at 719-553-2790. Lap swimming and water aerobics are moved to Ray Aguilar Park Pool, June 2nd through June 5th for evening water aerobics and lap swim due to heater. The heater being replaced at the City Park Pool this week. Water aerobics is from 6 to 7 PM. Lap swim is 5:30 to 7:30 PM. Drop in free, uh, drop, drop in fee of $3 per person. Pueblo City Parks and Arkansas River Corridor Open House, the city of Pueblo Parks and Rec, and the Pueblo Conservancy District are hosting an open house regarding the Pueblo City Park and Arkansas River Corridor Plan. The open house is scheduled Thursday, June 5th from 4 to 6 PM at the City Park Administration Office in the George Williams Pavilion at 801 Goodnight Avenue. And that concludes my updates unless you have any questions.
Okay, President Aliff, please.
Yeah, this doesn't pertain to your updates, but excuse me, too much pizza. Uh, Mayor Graham, you sent all of city council an email this afternoon talking about an urban renewal project that had a special meeting last week. And I mean, I, I just read the email and very concerned about how you can take money out of a TIF district and spend it outside of a TIF district. And you know, where's, where's the legality in that? And how was city council bypassed? And maybe the question is more for the attorney. If, if he's even aware of it, are you aware of it?
I am, however, City Attorney Sykes is the one who represents the city regarding pure matters, and I think she can speak to what's been happening if, if you'd like.
Did you, is that okay, Chair? She answers the question.
Thank you, President Aliff. Um, the, the money was used, uh, is voted to use to purchase a property that's directly adjacent to the district. Several years ago, the urban renewal law contained a provision that money couldn't be spent outside of the district. That provision has been removed. It was removed, I believe, in 2015. So they can take TIF money and spend it outside of the district, presumably. But my belief is, is that has to, it has to have a relation to the district. It has to have a benefit to the district. So depending on what they're going to use the property for, it could have a benefit for the district. For example, in Northland, they purchased property outside of the district to create a pedestrian bridge that connected the district to, across the highway to other portions of the city. So that had a benefit to the district because it brought people into the district. Okay? So that would be an example of using money outside of the district to benefit the district. So if this was a piece of property that they are going to use, for example, to expand the art center, something like that, that could potentially benefit the district because the art center is within the district. So it is possible for them to do that. The problem, I think the, the concern that the city has in this instance is there is no direct, no identified plan for the property. They are purchasing it. My understanding is, is that it's an old vacant property. So it may or may not be considered blighted, which would be another way that they might be able to spend the money outside of the district if they were generally trying to reduce blight in and around the district. So that's a possibility, but that was not identified in the resolution. So I think that's the concern that, that the mayor has.
I, you know, I went to the meeting. Uh, I know that the meeting was kind of sprung on the board members last minute that there was going to be a special meeting. I think you were notified 24 hours in advance. Um, and I think that the city's concern should be that city council many years ago approved a plan with outlines with the district with what the plan, the money would be used for in this property, even though it's across the street is outside of the urban renewal district. Furthermore, when we went to the meeting, um, there was no direct plan on what the property was going to be used for. It was talked that it would be mixed used. It would talk, it was talked that Pura would potentially build its new offices, um, over in that area. Along with several other ideas, a hotel was thrown out. So, you know, I, I representing the city and going to these meetings, I think that it's important that the city council knows that this type of issue is, has come up and that they've, uh, provided $400,000 to purchase a piece of property. I was also concerned that there wasn't an appraisal done on the piece of property and no due diligence was done on the piece of property. Nor have we really heard a plan moving forward on what that piece of property was going to be used for. So I think that those were the concerns. I know that Counselor Flores was there, Counselor Boston, who's a voting member on Urban renewal was not there. And so I was asked to bring, um, an update forward on what was voted on, on the special meeting. And so those are, those are my concerns and I shared them with you in the email that I sent earlier today.
Okay, just for the record, we're talking about the Stein property on fourth. Okay, Counselor Flores.
Number one, uh, should we, shouldn't this be, if we're going to be talking about such a serious matter, shouldn't we, shouldn't this be, shouldn't the citizens know we're talking about this? This is not on our agenda tonight. This is a point of order. I, I don't think we should be talking about this without proper notice. But since we've started this discussion, uh, I, it's my understanding that you talked to, uh, Mr. Benedetti, who is the, uh, bond counsel for Pura and that he told you verbally over the phone that this was acceptable. Mr. Benedetti, he helped draw, he helped draft part of the urban renewal law in Colorado. So we're not talking about a novice here. Uh, the other thing, uh, uh, as I recollect, uh, we, we, I have personally asked Urban Renewal to get a written opinion for Mr. Benedetti. And I haven't had a chance to check with him to see if we have it yet. But, uh, but again, you know, this thing, uh, was understood by the entire board. I think there's, there's, there's also a whole other subject about whether Urban Renewal has its own autonomy. And that, and that the city, uh, that there is a line somewhere. I don't know where that's at. But that's the other discussion that came up that day. And I think, I think we need to air all of this out at some point. But I don't like the idea that we're talking about this without proper notice. It's not on our agenda. And, uh, I'm willing to discuss it in detail at the appropriate time.
Counselor Mastry.
I agree with, um, Mr. Flores, uh, Counselor Flores. With the exception of, we're not in depth talking about it, but I think we should. I mean, not only should it come to council in an email, but we should have a work session because we've known for the last couple of years that the urban renewal projects lack plans and detailed plans. And so they, they, they take over the properties. I mean, they take over the area for TIF district for 25 years and things get completed and some doesn't get, don't get completed. What the details of that are, I don't know what the past administrations and the past city attorneys did. But I thought that we came into this, uh, we asked to be elected for change, to clean a lot of this stuff up. Because now it's just rumors. I'm hearing rumors that they're expecting TIF money for the Dillon Drive. Well, they came to us, uh, what, a year ago or something to talk about Dillon Drive? But we never voted on anything. We never voted on a, um, a, um, to move forward with the first step, and that is a blight study. And so, but I'm wondering what's going on over there and why those developers think they're getting something when we haven't even done any sort of approvals. Now, like I said, that's rumor. That's what I hear. Is that really happening? All I know is I see development going up over there on Dillon Drive. And so I think that, uh, as a council, we have the right to pull, investigate anything that we don't see, uh, that we have questions about. And so I think that, um, it needs a further discussion, but it needs a, a discussion that, uh, where we're all together and it's just not a hit and miss. But thank you, um, Counselor, I mean, President Aliff, because I hadn't read that yet. And it's interesting to know, but I'd like to know more in detail of what's going on here. I think we all would. Especially if it's an office for Pura outside of a TIF district. But we're using money from within the TIF district. I mean, that just all seems very strange. And that's just common sense of sitting on this dais and the experience of sitting on this dais for the past three years and hearing things work and how they're supposed to work in comparison to how they do work. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Counselor Boston.
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, so, uh, reference to being posted or not, boards and commissioned up states are posted on this agenda and it would have been brought up at the end of the meeting by myself, being the voting member that was on Pura, um, although I wasn't there for the meeting. So, uh, we can just wait till item E to continue this discussion because it would have been part of my board update because I do also have concerns about the direction Pura is moving. When the city has to have its own burn blighted boarded projects, when those are literally the things that agencies like Pura are supposed to be tackling. I think there is more things to discuss about Pura, but that was just going to be my comment on that situation.
Counselor Flores.
There, there's a difference between just a, a normal update, in my opinion. We've been talking about public policy here. This, this really an allegation, okay, that something is happening at Pura that, uh, maybe is not kosher. And then lastly, everything that Urban Renewal does has to be ratified by this council. So, um, you know, I, I think all of this needs to be, uh, looked at in much more depth.
President Aliff.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. We got, we received an email this afternoon from the mayor. This is a work session, not a regular meeting. Does not have to be posted. So, so the, the, the suggestion that if I have a question that we need to post it and I can ask it in two weeks is ludicrous. If anything comes up, that's what these, what a work session is about. Is that you are able to ask questions of the mayor, the chief of staff, your attorney amongst each other. Nobody's making a, uh, an accusation in the sense that I received an email that was very concerning based upon the information that was in the email. And I agree with you, Counselor Flores and Counselors Maestri, that we need to get this on a work session as quick as possible because there, I don't think under the statutes that this is something that has to be ratified by city council. I think that the resolution from, uh, Pura may be good enough. I don't know, but that's something that I guess in our work session, we'll be able to figure out. That's all I had. Thank you for answering the questions. Thank you, uh, Attorney Sykes for, for answering my question.
If this, if this change was made in 2015, that's 10 years ago. And trying to go, you know, digest all this information, I think we, hopefully we're going to postpone this thing and look at getting it set up for work sessions. We'll kind of have a better discussion than what we're having now. That's just my two cents.
Well, I think that's what we're asking you. So go ahead and set it for a work session.
That's fine. Is that fine? Okay, anybody else on that? You good? All right, next up, we have Pueblo Diversified Industries, David Pump, CEO. Public Diversified Industries, Terry Walden, Director of Community Engagement. And then it's a 15-minute presentation, so try your best to stay on time. Thank you. Well, there we go.
Introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dave Pump. I am President and CEO of Public Diversified Industries.
And I'm Terry Walden, Director of Community Engagement at Public Diversified Industries.
It is an honor to be for, to come before, uh, you city council members. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor as well. Thank you. Uh, we are here, uh, representing, we wanted to talk a little bit about Pueblo Diversified Industries. Uh, we've been able to give tours to quite a few of you and we're very grateful for that. We love to do, uh, that too as we move forward. Who is PDI? We've been around since 1967. Where a bunch of very, very courageous parents said that their children who had developmental and intellectual disabilities, uh, were worth it, had value and shouldn't be stuck at home or, uh, hid in a way at the hospital. Uh, we are all about employment, life skills, community connections. We're here, of course, in, uh, Pueblo, Colorado, uh, which we are very grateful to be so. Uh, we are accredited, uh, with national and international accreditations. Uh, one of the, uh, services lines that we have is with Medicaid provided services. So Medicaid is super important to us. Um, one of our big services is residential where we support about 30 people in host homes throughout Southern Colorado. Uh, primarily in the city, in the county, supported community, uh, supported community connections, vocational services around, uh, employing people, day programs, uh, which people have been to. Benefits planning, super important to us. We have a benefits planner who is certified through Cornell University to help people with disabilities, uh, get through the morass of being employed and also having benefits. Um, and of course, as part of our Medicaid provided services, community first choice, which goes into effect within this next month. We have a quick video for you about the importance of Medicaid.
Hopefully.
For the people like us? Oh, boy. That's not good. My name is Rebecca Rotten. I have been here for nine years. And currently I am the Fresh Greens Colorado employee. PDI has gave me independence by giving me the ability to work and go around the community and make a difference. If I didn't get Medicaid services, I would not be able to get, um, supportive employment and, um, day program. My life at home would be boring. I wouldn't be able to get anywhere. Not be able to have many friends that I have here at PDI. To the people that, um, are wanting to change the law and get rid of Medicaid, please go because it helps us so much. For one, medic, medication, the day program and the support that we get here at PDI means so much to people with disabilities. There's so much happiness that comes with coming here to PDI. That if people like us would not get it, we would, um, we wouldn't be happy.
Happy birthday, Rebecca. It was, uh, just her birthday yesterday.
The people.
Yeah, tell it again. Um, as part of our Medicaid services, uh, we also have an amazing program, uh, called Hope, helping our partners engage.
All right. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the Hope program. So really what it is geared towards is families that have children with disabilities. So not quite able to come to PDI yet because we service adults 18 and older. However, what happens to you as a family when your child is still in school? How do you know what their future looks like and what you need to do while they're still in middle school, elementary school sometimes, and high school to be prepared for adulthood? And so that's really what our Hope program is about. We do a lot of, um, different things within both school districts, 70 and 60, um, to really go and help those families know, help the teachers understand what is the Medicaid waiver system look like? Because unfortunately, if you're not on one of those Medicaid waivers, you're probably not going to have those benefits as an adult, which is super important. Nobody was out there teaching it. So about four years ago, we created this program that has been very successful. Last year, we touched about 2,500, um, families, um, all together to help them understand what's needed. So we continue to just grow that as well here in our community.
Um, in addition to our Medicaid services, we also provide, uh, support service lines like manufacturing logistics, uh, facilities vending. Please click the button quick. You have time. Um, and enter our manufacturing logistics. Uh, we could do a lot of great things. Uh, with receiving inventory pallet, order fulfilling, kidding manufacturing, such, such as such things. And of course, PDI facilities are new offering where we do landscaping, custodial, plant care. Uh, super shout out to PB and T doing plant care downtown. If you've ever been in there, it's a big greenhouse. We take care of all of those, uh, uh, plants, also landscaping. And vending all throughout Southern Colorado. Uh, it's wonderful situation where an individual who was in service is now, uh, running our vending service, about 99.5% of that service and is teaching other people how to do the, uh, vending. Uh, economic impact, super important. I think you guys are aware that there was a, a study by the CSU, Pueblo and United Way. We are the third largest, uh, nonprofit in Pueblo County, uh, in that particular report. Uh, super important, 200 employees, just about 100 people with disabilities. We are providing employment services, which is the tune of 1.3, over 1.3 million dollars annually and 14 veterans, uh, almost 300,000. Uh, we are located at 2828 Granada. I'm sure you've been there. If not, you need to come by there. We have a couple of different, um, companies, Illuminado, C and D Detailing, Southern Colorado Youth Development, and of course, PDI, and there's room for more.
Well, the reason for this is our community integration. So that's super important to us that not only are we in the community, but the communities that are on site with us as well.
Thank you very much. 50% of what we do is Medicaid. That's a typical, uh, nonprofit system, uh, doing Medicaid, uh, providing services. Uh, the other 50% are 49% of what we do is providing a service in our community, billing for production or for services. Only 2% of our income, roughly 2% of our income is from philanthropy, philanthropy. Thank you very much. And, uh, fundraising, uh, like some of the events that we have that you've been to and supported. Thank you so very much. This is very cool.
Yeah. So one of the things we got involved with a couple of years ago is Safety Jam. Hopefully you guys all know it. Um, the AMR puts on. Last year, we decided to get involved and give a, um, adaptive tricycle away. So it was super cool and we'll be doing that again this year. So if I get it to.
Freedom of a mobility trike. Pueblo Diversified Industries partnered with St. Mary Corwin and American Medical Response are giving away a drifting mobility trike at Safety Jam June 7th at Lake Menocaw Veterans Memorial Park. Visit the Pueblo Diversified Industries booth. PDI staff will verify the need and register you to win. The drawing will be at 3 o'clock. Safety Jam, it's the place to be.
All right. I'm going to talk a little just about what we do for the community. So we, we're not always asking for things from the community. We also give back and that's really important to us over at PDI. So we partner with RMSCR, do their blessing boxes. Um, we participate in Public Food Project. Support several local events. As you guys see us out there and about, we sit on several different boards throughout the community. And then, as I talked about, Safety Jam. Um, some of our events that we have come up, upcoming is that are free to the community. So not, when, normally when we host an event at PDI, it is not just about who we are on site. It is about the community. So we have our splash party coming up on June 19th from 9 to 1. All communities invited. Last year, I think we had a little over 150 people there, which was super exciting. We also this year are doing our annual barbecue. We're switching it up a little bit instead of doing it onsite. We're actually going to be doing an IDD awareness day at the Pueblo Zoo. So from 9 to 1 on July 12th, we'll be doing this day at the zoo. It is open to the community. So anybody that wants to come out and spend the day with us at the zoo are welcome to come. And then we're adding something to Colorado State Fair in partnership with the Colorado State Fair Foundation, Adam Dario and team. Um, we're adding an exceptional rodeo. So it is a rodeo that'll be happening on August 25th from 8:30 to 12:30. Um, the event itself will be from 9:30 to 10:30 for the rodeo, but what it does is it brings PRCA cowboys together and, um, athletes. And they come out and teach their sport to people with, their children with disability. So we're super excited. They've done this at the NFR and different places. So we're excited to bring it to Pueblo for the state fair. So we'll be doing that this year as well. Want me to keep going? Okay. Oh, see, I can't do both. I can't multitask. Annual fundraising event. So as most of you know, we do our Hope on the Greens Golf Tournament every year. We're usually the first weekend of April. Um, so we enjoy that. That's, that's what really supports our Hope program that we talked about earlier. Um, we also do Dancing with the Pueblo Stars. As you guys know, you guys, um, recommended a $1,500 sponsorship for last, or last week for this. It did include a table sponsorship. So there are tickets involved in that. And I've got President Aliff on our list for 2027. So you'll hear from me, just so you know.
You mean, he's dancing?
Yeah, he said, he said it, live meeting last week. So. And then another one that we in, that we do every year. Normally we do our Harvest Fest downtown. Um, we're changing that up a little bit this year because we kind of did two different things last year. So we're doing our fall and Halloween event. Last year, we hosted Halloween at PDI and had like a little makeshift haunted house and stuff. We had over 1,200 people show up to that event. So we're going to continue to do that, continue to grow that this year. So we'll just watch for that as well. And then I think I have one more video for you. For those of you that haven't attended our dancing, so just so you guys know what dancing, I know last year it talked about how much you guys had gave us, but we took this over. This is only our fourth year of hosting it. Prior to us, Downtown Association had it. So we've had it for the last four years. See if I can get it to work.
This is.
So we're super excited every year for this event. This year it is 70s theme. So make sure you come prepared for that too, though, because you've got to fit.
Disco.
Disco.
Big difference.
There is, there is.
Uh, PDI has brought, we can watch it again. He has only seen it 500 times. Uh, PDI's broader impact, uh, so great to be part of our community. Uh, we really believe that Pueblo is the best community in Colorado. Period. Now let's add to that the best, uh, community in our nation. And PDI is committed to providing the absolute best services for adults with intellectual, uh, developmental disabilities in the entire nation. And that means that we are providing not just, uh, care, but we're providing, uh, workforce opportunities and employing people. And I think that our little nonprofit there in Pueblo, Colorado, right here in Pueblo, Colorado, excuse me, with over a $1.3 million worth of just regular wages, just like anybody else would have, is a super important testimony to that. As we're a job creator and of course, we, we, uh, all about ensuring that we have inclusive environments. We have a call to action. It's really important. We're not asking you, uh, for a lot. We really don't because we're just exceedingly grateful for our community. We're exceedingly grateful for our city. Uh, what we're asking for, uh, is for you to come to events, show up, be there. We're thankful for when you do. Thank you very much. It's fantastic. Come in, uh, come to Dancing with the Pueblo Stars. You do, you have a table. Come in and enjoy that. It is probably, it is the, it is hands down the best, uh, uh, night of, of the year, uh, here in Pueblo. Uh, we want to explore opportunities. We want to make sure that we are moving, uh, Pueblo forward and PDI forward.
We want to explore opportunities. We want to make sure that we are moving Pablo forward and PDI forward. And make sure that our community is the absolute best community in the nation. Support employment. Anything else you want to add?
No, I don't think so.
We have eleven sec, ten seconds.
One big thing is we, you know, that exceptional rodeo, we, we love for you guys to be out there with that because it's just going to be a big event for not just Pablo, but the state of Colorado. So.
And done. Good job.
I'm gonna take the, the liberty to jump on this one. I was with Pablo Diversified Industries for quite a while as on their board. My son Aaron was born with spinal meningitis, was part of PDI for about ten years. And his inability to maintain a full hour day working, but they always found a way to get the best out of my son. And he's still, he lives with us now, but I just believe that it should actually be called Pablo Dignified Industries. Because what they've done for me and my family. Thank you. Council boss.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I took the tour with you guys. All your events are great. Everything you guys do there is amazing. I can't give you guys enough credit. You guys deserve so much more than you do. And what you're able to do on your own is just amazing. You guys find your own sources of income. You try to, you know, give purpose to people. It's just not enough good things can be said. What I really want to point out, you guys had barbecue last year at PDI's Dancing with the Stars, right? That was the best food I have ever eaten at any event in this entire city. If you can cater that again.
Well, they
Did not cater that in.
Sure, they did it. The convention center made all of that food. Yeah. We know it was thrown off by the wipes because we had to borrow some wipes from another restaurant, but they actually made all of the food.
That was a big deal. Thank you.
Amazing. That was the best food I've ever had.
Well, we hope that's next. We don't, you know, seventies.
We haven't even decided.
Yeah, we haven't do yet, but it has to top that. That was really good for all of us, that Nashville chicken.
Okay, but again, kudos to you guys. I can't give you enough credit.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, I'm President Alif.
Thank you. Hey, thank you guys, what you do for the community. My niece has also been, has, has worked at PDI for over twenty years. And you know, just the changes and the, the pride she has in, in going to work and and earning a living and, and doing the things that are necessary is just, I mean, it's awesome. And, you know, thank the Lord for, for organizations like yourselves that make that happen. So there's a lot of us that see that, 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 that know what a good job you're doing. And I just want to make sure you know that. We appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Council Flores.
I think Joe was ahead of me.
Council Latino.
I just want to, again, echo what my fellow council, councilmen, women have indicated that it, it's a great organization. I have, having worked myself with the special needs individuals and education in the metropolitan area of Denver and seeing what you've done, and I have attended your, your event, I, I have to say congratulations to you and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Council Flores.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears that when you started your presentation that you have some concerns about Medicaid funding that could potentially be stopped. And the irony of this is that everyone is saying that if there's going to be a work requirement, you have the work requirement, it's built into the whole system. Yet I still see the, in your eyes that the potential exists that you could still be looking at a at, at a cut, maybe in other programs that are not related to the work requirement. Have you done an assessment? Have you been notified by the state or the feds that your organization stands to lose a significant amount of Medicaid money?
Thank you very much for that very insightful question. That national dialogue is indeed tenuous and makes us feel very uncomfortable. We have not received any notification, nor do we believe at this time that we will have an impact in that way. But if we do, we will certainly let people know. The video that we saw of Becky was one of five videos that we were able to put together, really aimed at ensuring people are aware that while we go through this situation as a nation, that people with disabilities can't get overlooked. Regardless of political affiliation, regardless of where people are in that discussion. We just don't want people like Becky to be lost in the shuffle. People who don't have a voice often are the ones who get looked over and we want to make sure that we are the voice for those.
Keep us informed. I want to know what the final outcome is. And just, just to comment, I've recently moved, but I used to live in El Camino, always coming down Faribault by Lowe's. And if you ever driven there in the morning when some of your clients are going to work, I've never seen a happier bunch of people that you have built the self-esteem in these people. And if, if everybody had that kind of attitude when they went to work, very happy, they have their lunch pail, they're going into work. You talk about improving people's lives. I, I don't think you can even measure it. But I always would get a kick out of that driving right by your building about how happy they were that they were working and happy that they had that opportunity. And that's always sticks in my mind. So thank you for what you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Maestri.
Thank you for everything that you do in this community. You know, I, my cousin was born with cerebral palsy. So I know what it's like to have disabilities in my own family. She's forty six now, though. So she made it a long way because she wasn't expected to make it that long. And you know, my brother had a stroke, double stroke when he was fourteen. And so the left side of his body is paralyzed and he's had struggled his whole life with his disability. So I appreciate organizations like this because I've seen them within my own family help turn their lives around and give them a purpose, you know, something to work for. The question I had was about the tricycle. How many apply to win? How, how about how many, what is it, a ticket or they apply?
No, so you, you have to attend the event and you just register. And then we go through, we make sure that you qualify. So qualifying would be you can't ride a two wheel bike, those kinds of things, right? And last year there was only six that, that put their entry in. And only one that really qualified. And that's why we're pushing it a little bit harder this year because we want everybody out there that qualifies. We would love to have two or three hundred out there that we have to select from that day. Because it'll be a live drawing on the third. It does take, gosh, it took us six months to get the bike in because I worked with their, her personal physical therapist to make sure we were ordering something specific for her. So to the young lady that did it.
Are they expensive?
Yeah, it was about thirty five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So this year we're super excited because last year AMR and PDI did it. This year, I'm going to say, it's common spirit, I'm like, I'm going to say Central, they'll all off. Common Spirit has stepped up and they'll be donating a thousand dollars towards it as well. So we're super excited about that. And hopefully we continue to grow or we could get more than one a year away.
I think that'd be also another request from Council contingencies that this council would appreciate in participating in.
Yeah.
Especially if it was more than, if we're, especially if we could provide an additional bicycle.
Yeah.
It'd be nice.
Be fantastic.
Okay.
So keep that in mind.
All right, we'll do.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Martinez.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about your Fresh Greens collab? Did I just see that you guys are working with the zoo now?
Yes, we are working with the zoo as part of our PDI facilities. And the zoo calls it Zunity, which I think is such a cool name. And we provide custodial services at, at the zoo through that, that particular effort. We hope, yeah, I can put it out there, we really hope to collaborate with the zoo when it comes to creating a fodder farm. And feeding the animals. We know we want that to happen.
Oh, what can we do to make that happen?
I don't know how yet, but we're, we need to make it happen.
Yeah. And then also just our event that we're planning with the zoo. So lots of different partnerships with them. Because we are doing, I mean, our, our barbecue, we expect at least five hundred people from the community to show up to that event. So. Which is
The fodder farm thing, though, I think is a brilliant idea. And I think it, I mean, it makes sense because it's, it helps PDI and also you think that it would also be cost savings for the zoo because you're growing, you know what I mean? You guys would be growing all of the leaves and stuff like that, but the animals.
The fodder is like barley. It's amazing. It takes seven days to grow. And it's ready for consumption. It's a big deal. And also can be food for other animals in our community.
Great.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Well, I'll be crossing my fingers that that happens soon.
Me too. Thank you.
Let me know how I can help with that, Dave.
Absolutely.
Cool.
Council Maestri. I just want to throw, do you remember Tom Drolshagen? Is he still there?
Tom Drolshagen has retired. I did see him come back last week.
Oh, my God. Because why Karen Lilly, I worked with Karen Lilly. Is Dell still, wasn't he on the board? Did he pass there?
No, not recently.
Yeah, I did a lot of work with them. Here's an idea. I was going to throw this out since we're having this discussion, maybe counsel can consider. There's a lot of dinners that come up that we sponsor and stuff and we all can't make it. More than half this council is working full time. And just because you're retired doesn't mean you're not working. But I was thinking maybe we could figure out a way for participation if we're sitting eight, if we're paying for eight seats or ten seats. Maybe we could look at maybe getting people to get involved that whether it's student sets, high schools, council that can take a seat. As long as we can get it arranged and organized, maybe through our administrative assistant and have them show up with the counselor. They come to his guest, maybe three or four seats, five seats. That would, and not just for your organization, but I'm talking about every single dinner that we have in the city. You can also go to PCC, maybe they have something where it's a developmentally challenged program for students and invite them to the process and then introduce them. Maybe CSU, same kind of thing. There's all kinds of things and maybe they'll get you future employees down the road, who knows? But I just want to throw that out. I think it's something we should explore to see if we can get more participation at these dinners. Council Boston.
I really like that idea, Council Montgomery. I think trying to get more involvement and especially in the younger community, those that want to be in leadership, council, things like that. I think that's, we kind of get them to see what goes on, be, you know, have them be your guest, kind of show them around, introduce them to other people that are power players in the city or you know, in different agencies and whatnot. So I, I like that idea because a lot of times the tables do go unfilled or people claim tickets and don't show up. So I would encourage people to only claim tickets if you're going to show up. So that way we can use more tickets for things like that.
Well, we're going to push that forward, Mr. Girbert. Is that? We okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine. Just touch base with me afterwards.
Okay.
We'll get, we're going to set up.
All right. I appreciate. Does anybody have anything else for these two fine folks here? Thanks. I can sure you can hear the gratitude in our voices here, but thank you guys so much for what you do. Really, really. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the new West Side Housing Community Update. Jack Bay's the CEO, Down By The Bay LLC, fifteen minute presentation. And we're doing pretty good on time. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
I'm like Councilman Flores, I drive right by PDI every morning and they are the happiest people alive. But what I wanted to share with you is kind of interesting. I saw the notation here that was, you know, a new, new community on the west side. It's actually kind of a new and an old community on the west side. You know, a couple of you know me, I mean, I've spent an awful lot of time on the west side over the last, probably the last decade. I was Chief Operations Officer, the Chief Business Officer over Chavez Huerta and doing a bunch of stuff over there. One of the things that it's kind of neat to see the west side, what's happening right now. You know, I've lived here for fifty, nearly fifty years. I, I figured out that this would have been my fiftieth year of, after my freshman year. Came down here to play baseball in nineteen seventy five and never left. Met a girl from Pablo Central and have stayed forever. But it's really kind of neat to see what's going on on the west side right now with the apartments that are going on, the other rentals that are over there. Just, I've been really watching the street, Twenty Fourth Street, really encouraged about that, watching that because that's going to open a whole avenue of growth and a lot of not only commercial growth, but also residential growth. But what I wanted to share with you this evening is a little bit about what we're doing at Westgate, what we're trying to do as, as a developer to bring affordable housing to the community. And how do we do the little beep? There it is. Okay.
Whoops.
Okay, one of the things that I didn't realize and I, I loved a little bit about history and I think Councilman Flores can attest a little bit of this. I didn't realize that there were eleven dairies over there at one time. I mean, I remember one dairy called Hyde Park Dairy when I was a freshman in college and got an opportunity to go change tires over there at the dairy. And I didn't realize that, but in talking to the folks over there, there were a tremendous amount of dairies that were in that area. The city was actually annexed that area in nineteen sixty eight, which is really surprising to me. And that there was originally an eighteen ninety nine plat that we actually were building when I started building back in nineteen ninety eight, I believe with for one of my former companies, I had town, which is today's homes. We built approximately two hundred homes in there. And then I left and went up north with another company. But I wanted to just kind of share with you a little bit about what's going on over there. I think, you know, there's a lot of things that are really kind of neat that have happened. One is I came here, shoot, this is probably more about five or six years ago, concerned over the fire station, the delivery of fire services to the charter school because we were in all modular buildings. And I found out that they really weren't coming from Chief Riley at the time, that they weren't coming from where the golf course was at. They were actually coming from over by Twenty Ninth Street, which I found kind of interesting. But now I see that the actual fire station is being built and I'm very, very happy for that. But also a couple of other things that happened at the school over at Chavez Huerta, I know there's an awful lot of scuttlebutt, but I don't believe they're going away. I think they're going to stay in there and be extremely strong. I've realized that Chavez Huerta, for what they started over there, they've done a tremendous job. I think they've had some difficulties over the years, but one of the neat things about is we were able to switch their entire facilities from modular buildings over to permanent buildings. They are now in some state of the art buildings to be able to teach kids in, in the right way. We were able to revamp the, the holy rosary baseball fields over there in South Off Field. And I've had some brief conversations with some other folks in town that may be interested, you know, depending on what really happens is to be able to take over those facilities and make them usable each and every day. But in, in, in a sense, Chavez Huerta contributed about eighty million dollars of investment over there between the best grant that we were able to get, plus the other stuff of refinancing your bonds. What we're looking to do right now, and I'm going to share with you briefly in just a second, we're, we're going to do one of two things. We're either going to build a six hundred and one unit, multi-family and single-family community over there. Or we've actually been asked to convert that over to a four hundred and sixty six single family and sell it to an investor for build to rent, which ultimately would be to own as well. It'll have a little clubhouse in it where we've decided to do our little model that we were able to come up with over the last few years. I spent nearly two years in Dallas, Fort Worth area and was able to see an awful lot of communities that are being built down there right now that are really affordable communities and being able to help the, the people that really want to buy a home, to be able to buy a home. Because as we all know, the price of homes have gone, you know, through the roof over since COVID. The nice part about it is we're also potentially going to put about six to eight hundred students in that new school over there. So in total, you know, it's roughly about a hundred and twenty, twelve million dollar investment that we're going to be doing over the next couple of years. Kind of share with you a little bit about, you know, the returns to the city. Obviously, when we start building things, the city collects fees and that. And in summary, roughly, the city's going to be able to take permit fees, gas, water tap fees, development fees. And when you look at the tune of that, really over the, the build out of roughly about four point three million dollars, which is really about an annual return after post-build of roughly about one point four million dollars in taxes will be collected year after year on the four hundred and sixty six or the six hundred and one units over there as well. But to give you an idea, it is kind of a, I'm going to flip over to, I forget to use this thing. Okay, I'm sharing with you a little bit about what we're doing. This is the community. This community has been really taken us roughly about my partners in, in the audience, roughly about four and a half, almost five years. We actually started it before COVID. And actually the process has changed too. Originally, when this happened, the company back, a company called Pablo Development Corporation was going to buy us out because we owned roughly about twenty acres over there south, my, my building company does. And they were going to build homes. Well, post-COVID, now it's the other way around. We're actually buying them out. We actually bought nine hundred thousand dollars of finished lots from them recently. Closed on those. And so we're now in a position to be able to begin construction. Once we can get our product approved and I'll share with you in a minute. But it's kind of unique because what we're doing is going back to an old style of living where you have cottage styles homes where your people are facing each other. There's a little courtyard in the middle, a little bit more secure for the kids to, you know, I, I look back at my own childhood. A little bit more secure for the kids to, you know, I, I look back at my own childhood. I actually played out in the street. I saw a commercial the other day, if you haven't played street ball, uh, you haven't lived. Um, and those of us that probably grew up in the seventies, remember it. Um, but uh, you know, this, this will give kids an opportunity to, you know, basically play in a little protected area. Um, and so it's kind of a, a neat uh rendition of what we're doing. You can see the next slide. We were actually gonna take and convert it over to uh, this is the conversion, if we convert it to uh all single families. Now, uh, the one thing we are doing too is we have a little clubhouse. It's gonna be in there. It's gonna be a small clubhouse, roughly about, I think it's eleven hundred to twelve hundred square feet. Little small pool, but it's more of a gathering area for the community. Uh, one of the things that we, my partners and I have founded, you know, people in general, I have a daughter that's twenty-seven years old. Um, they don't really have the same desires that we had when I was older and wanted to have my own home, have, you know, some land and be able to do the things we want to do at our own home. They want to be able to get out and go. Um, and so we've kind of changed in our mindset a little bit with what we're doing there. Uh, the second thing where we want to bring is we're also working with uh another gentleman by the name of Rudy Martinez. I think a couple of councilmen know Rudy real well, and we're working with Rudy to bring in a little thing called a casita village. Uh, this is again, the concept that we're bringing back from Texas, uh, where we'd be able to provide either for rent or for sell in this area. We really haven't determined which way we're gonna do that. This is the preliminary drawing. Um, I think we already got a couple of issues when we get to planning that we're gonna have to clean up, but uh, we know, you know, especially the exit on tuxedo may not happen. Uh, but we designed it this way, and really what we're looking at doing is putting in the smaller homes in there, be more for uh empty nesters. Um, people that really just want, you know, small residents and just a place to come and go. Um, it'll be an HOA driven where the HOA will take care of the uh basically the outside of the community so they can come and go. But we're also gonna have a little concept where we're gonna put garages out there, two car garage with a casita. Or basically, we, we called them when I was building them back in Brighton in two thousand, early two thousands, we called them granny suites. Um, you know, I don't think I would ever get my grandma. I mean, I look, my wife and I are actually grandma and grandpa. I don't think we'd ever get up there uh to be able to use that, but it's something that's kind of new. Uh, but we're working with Rudy on this, bringing it forward too. And another thing we want to bring forward is we hear a little bit about the plight of the city is to work with urban renewal. We've shared this with Jerry Pacheco and his staff, and we're gonna work through this. Um, I actually got to see this project. This project was actually built in Oklahoma City uh with the Catholic Church. Uh, they had a need for to be able to provide some temporary housing for folks. So what you can see is on the left-hand side is boxable's product being brought in. And this product, I'm gonna share with you briefly a little bit about it, is, you know, to convert a stick frame builder that has done stick framing for all of my life, roughly about forty-five years in the, in of active buildings and being involved in construction to solve a sudden saying, hey, this is something that might change this world of, of entry level homes. Um, then you can see where they actually provided down the right, the uh six units were there, but there were actually twelve residents by themselves. Um, and then they did a little bit of duplex stuff where they had the two boxes together. We put a duplex together. Um, I actually saw this project. It was, it's nearing completion, should be done roughly by uh, within the next several months, it'll be actually completed. I want to go back down there and see how they actually use it. One of the ways that we plan on reducing the size of a lot is a couple of ways. And they're not really, I mean, when you look at them from state of the art, things really, you're, you're gonna reduce them in certain ways. Uh, entry level price for a house right now in, in the city of Pueblo is roughly three hundred fifty, three hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, we looked at, basically, we had thirty-six lots that we ended up uh with over on um Eighteenth Street, uh, adjacent to Eighteenth Street that we bought from Pueblo Development Corporation. Those were the actual two city blocks that were developed by the city uh back uh to give us a contiguous area from Pueblo Boulevard all the way over to Pueblo uh Chavez Warta. Uh, off of Pueblo Boulevard, we wanted an access there, and we have the access now, which is kind of nice. But the only ways we're gonna be able to reduce our costs is look at it in a different way. Look at this as matrix and say, okay, how can we break this and come up a little bit different? And we've brainstormed this really over the last eighteen months, and it's really been the last eight months that we've actually started doing something with it. You know, we, we realized that we have to reduce the lot size. We can no longer have a lot size of a fifty foot wide lot. If you're gonna try to get a house, you know, at, at two hundred fifty thousand, it just doesn't work. Uh, the other thing is reduce cycle times. Right now, the cycle times, uh, when I was building with today's homes, we were right around a hundred and twenty days. Um, doing it, I look at builders today, builders, and I visit with them. They're looking at anywhere from two hundred and thirty to two hundred and fifty days. They've actually extended it instead of going the other way. Uh, but the main thing we want to do is use a, a concept uh of modular uh factory-built product. Um, I've looked at the boxable one. I've had some discussions with Darren Zaruba over at Adoba. In the event that we don't get our product approved, because we have to get the product approved in the state of Colorado. Uh, but when we get this all rolling, and I'm sharing with you an example, we had three houses that we priced and priced a thousand square foot ranch right around there, a thousand, eleven hundred square foot ranch. Uh, fourteen hundred square foot, um, two-story, three-bedroom, two and a half bath without a garage. And then we did one with a garage. Uh, was roughly about sixteen hundred square feet that would give you almost four bedrooms. That four-bedroom home came in at, at three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, we were able to bring in, and you can see the price of it right there. It's two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. We brought it basically reduced to a hundred thousand dollars in price. That is significant when it's coming to qualify for an entry level home for either somebody coming right out of college or folks that are on later in life, want to get another home and downsize. Um, and so, you know, we're committed. The thing that we really wanted to do and really what we liked with the investor that we have that came to us eight months ago and said, hey, uh, would you be willing to build out four hundred and sixty-six lots for me for build to rent? Um, Bruce and I never really thought about that. So we did, we started looking into it. Um, and then we were discussing where he wanted to be price point driven and stuff like that, where he'd be at price. In order to do it, we had to look at a modular product because there's no way we could get to his price point stick frame in it. Um, and so the, what we did is we looked at boxable, and this has been an eight, about a year's process for me trying to get converted to get somebody who's very scrupulous about building and understanding building, having been involved probably between Bruce and I, maybe eighteen thousand homes, uh, let alone probably another fifty, fifty to a hundred commercial projects that I've done over my life of saying, I'm willing to look at something totally different. But this old dog can learn different tricks. What I've learned from it, if going out there, I went out to the, the factory itself, uh, looked at the factory, went out to the project, uh, talked to the principal people that are doing it. Um, went to the builder's show, um, not only last year, but also this year, just to see what they were doing. This year, they came up with a different one. They came up, they, and how this came evolved, you know, back in California, they were doing what they call ADUs, which basically putting a grandma in a suite in your backyard. Um, and so now they've kind of morphed to uh builders looking at it. Dr. Horton is one of their investors as well. And Dr. Horton came to them and said the same thing that they, that I did. I would love to have it, but I want, you know, I want a two-bedroom, or two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and I want traditional entry level homes to be able to do this. Now, uh, was able to be there in February and saw their product and their, what they have in the prototypes. And now they're uh actually had Grant Gardone there uh this last week, uh, looking at doing some investment with them. Uh, they've raised over a hundred and eighty million dollars. Um, they're well on their way, and you see some of their product that they have here. This is the original stuff that you saw, which was the ADU over on the left-hand side. What you see in phase, what they call in phase two is now the traditional homes. You're seeing a townhome project. Uh, and we actually have on our site, four different sites that we uh were originally gonna do townhomes. And the investors asked us to convert it. We still would rather do the townhomes because it makes a mix in the community. They also do uh workforce, workforce housing. Now, they've actually done several uh workforce housing ones in the neighborhood of um for um a lot of our military bases. They did one in the Philippines that I got opportunity to see the, the video on. It was tremendous. But what I love more about it and what I've always said, if I couldn't live in this house myself, I wouldn't build it. The fit and finish of this home, the energy efficiency of this home is far superior to what I could build in an entry level home traditionally. And I mean that sincerely because I've done it. I've tried to do this, and when you look at the new energy codes, it's hard for us to build. But this will give you an idea of what we're trying to do. Uh, how the city can assist us is really a couple of ways. One, um, we would love to see the city reduce some of the fees, um, because as we look at over the last five years, our costs have increased. We've gone from houses that we were gonna build in the two-seventies to all of a sudden in, in the three-seventies. And a lot of that's driven not only by fees, but other uh things. And then streamline the process of approval of getting development stuff approved and getting them out the door. Um, you know, in other uh states, I was down in Texas and being able to get communities, we could actually get them done in a ninety-day period. It was predictable. I met with the planning department, uh, Bruce and I did over the last four or five months, and we asked the same question. You know, we just wanted to be predictable. When can, when I can, when can I stop out? And so that's kind of where we're at. Uh, we would love to sit down with the city. Uh, I want to see this city grow. Lived here for fifty years. I always thought the city would be much bigger than it is today. Uh, but I remember going through Colorado Springs in nineteen seventy, probably nineteen seventy-five, when I was coming down as a freshman. It was roughly a hundred thousand people. Pueblo was a hundred thousand people. Today, the city of Colorado Springs is, who knows what it is. I don't know what city Colorado Springs, but it's roughly half a million people. Um, we have something that communities in Pueblo or that communities along the front range don't have. We have water. And it is, it is a true gem that if we manage it appropriately, we can attract the, you know, we're, we're really doing it in a reverse way of attracting industries through building. Um, we try to attract it in a different way. We've been doing it with Pet, but they've done a wonderful job. Um, but as I drive by the Budweisers and the uh Walmart distribution plants of the world, I get a little frustrated. So I'd love to see this city grow, and if there's any way we can be part of it, uh, we would love to. And so I'll leave it for questions for Councilman President Olive.
Well, I got uh real quick, I don't know if anybody else, you know, I've got a bunch of questions. Um, in reference to the we're talking about low income workforce, uh, mixed income, medium income. What, and then also in reference to different types of manufacturers, whether it's a boxable, whether it's a Tesla home, whether it's pallet homes, I'm sure you've looked at all those, but I'm just curious, is there a minimum, when you say a thirty, was it a thirty square, I mean, thirty foot?
Um, I think, I think the lowest we felt, um, Councilman Gomez is that we could get to is a thirty foot. Uh, Bruce and I looked at, I think it was what, twenty-seven or twenty-five, we looked at and and, and him and I, believe me, we've done some very unique product. We did a community in Chicago that we did Z lots and all kinds of crazy things, but we were trying to be at such that we could gain access. What we would like to do is have a detached rear garage that would be an option where people could put it up later on because a garage, you know, that can be built a little bit later. So what we're trying to do is figure out how can we get the affordability down where somebody can buy an entry level home? Um, and really truly, as we look at it today, uh, in a traditional building market, we always, and, and I'll, I'll share with you how we did it. We had a company called today's homes, which was our entry level um manufacturer, you know, or builder. We had Heritage Homes, which did all of our patio homes. We did Fox Run and Eagles Nest and a few of those other communities like that. Then we had uh Chateau Homes, which is really did, I mean, I take that back, Cuchina Builders actually did our custom homes building. And so we had a segment, whatever segment we were reading for, we actually attuned our manufacturing and our production process for that. So what, but what we're here for today is entry level homes. I have a daughter that's twenty-seven years old in Nashville, Tennessee. The entry level price for a home out there is half a million dollars. And so, you know, if there's a way that we can help in, in my lifetime of get that down in a different way, um, that's what I really want to try to assist. But when I looked at this boxable product and I started looking at the energy efficiency, and it was interesting, the time I spent out there uh in February, um, a couple of the, the owners and stuff kept asking me, are you writing a dissertation on us or what? Um, but I had a lot of questions, you know, and my questions were energy efficiency, which is a big thing for us, because if I can get it efficiently uh done for the, the consumer, then I can keep their costs down. Um, because, you know, if I go buy an old house and it's not very energy efficient, well, I'm, you know, I'm trading dollars.
Are you, are you concentrating on off-the-grid homes as well?
Um, we're, we're gonna focus in two, two ways. One is the entry level communities and the way we want, and we're gonna do these little patio home communities. We consider Rudy's to be like a little patio home community, and those are ones I did very successfully. Um, when I was in the building, I looked at my years of building, and those were probably the most not only the most profitable, but also the most efficient ones we ever did, because they were for a finite group of people. Um, you know, it was kind of the same thing that we're looking at doing here is people want to be able to come and go. Um, I'm at the same thing. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to get like uh uh Councilman Flores to be able to move into a smaller place. I live right now in an eighty-nine hundred square foot home in El Camino. Uh, why did I build it that way? Because I was a builder back then. I could. Um, but now that all the kids are gone and everybody else is gone, it's my wife and I there, and we're saying, well, we'd like to downsize too, and I don't want to cut twelve thousand square feet of grass every week. Um, so we're trying to look at the, the same thing, but those are the two sectors that mainly, you know, the entry level homes um, to be able to somebody to come out of college, get a good job and say, okay, now I want to, I want to begin to create the generational wealth, which really traditionally comes through real estate. Um, how can I get into it without having to rent and pay somebody else that equity?
What are the, what are the, and we used to talk about seventy-five days from contract to keys.
Yes.
Is there an average size home we're talking about building here? It's a one bedroom, two bedroom, three square foot.
This could be anywhere from a thousand square foot ranch to an eighteen hundred square foot two stories.
In seventy-five days.
In seventy-five days. Now, keep in mind, we're doing a parallel, because what we would be doing, once we have the development done, I'm running parallel to the manufacturing. Once I assign the contract, manufacturing is going, they're running the production there. I'm running basically the uh foundation, uh, all of the services to the site, ready to go. It comes, sits on the site. Um, and pretty much the inside of it, once we open the box and everything else and get it fit and finished within two days, it's there. All we're gonna do is we're putting a stucco wrap around it because we want, you know, to create a certain look within the community. Um, and so within, basically within two weeks of that, they'll be able to deliver that house.
One more thing in reference to the, I mean, my ears go up when you talk about HOA.
Mm hmm.
Now, sometimes that's a real painful subject for a lot of folks.
Yes.
Explain that.
HOA is really uh being able to maintain things for the community themselves that need to be taken care of. Um, I get really frustrated with, um, you know, as we build detention ponds and a few things like this, and they become weed farms. Um, I don't like that. I like the things, things be well groomed and be taken care of. They look neat. They look professional. What we do with the HOA is we keep it to a minimum. We say, okay, we're gonna take care of the water bill for you because, you know, I can give you water. Uh, if I do it through a, a main, um, we'll have a, a common water bill that'll be built to each site. Um, we'll be able to help you in the exterior, being able to take care of the snow removal, you know, cutting the grass and ours is we're really gonna try to zero escape and maintain the grass a little bit smaller because people really don't, you know, they're uh wanting to use less grass and, you know, years when I'd love to go out, we used to go out and try to do, you know, build snowmen and all those stuff in the grass. Well, now, you know, it's kind of minimized a lot of that stuff that's happened. And so what the HOA is, is a conduit to be able to take care of the community, to make sure, maintain that the professionalism of the community and, and I would guess basically call it the curb appeal of the community.
I'm gonna go to Council of my string. She's biting at the. Do you want to do this?
So is that just gonna be the common areas that you're maintaining or people's individual yards?
We're gonna, we're the common areas, which would basically be the front yards.
Mm hmm.
Um, obviously in the corner edge where they're facing together, people do the whole entire thing. Uh, we've actually developed a couple of little pocket parks where we can go put a little um gazebo out there or something where they can go out to a little picnic, take the little dogs for a walk, like the little gazebo up by Chavez Warta. There's one out there in a little park, which is kind of cool. Um, or to put, you know, just a hunting out there where they can go out, have a little picnic, or just, just go out and, you know, enjoy um nature and things like that. We, we really want to try to tie it to the, I, with the trail systems when I was working with them before. Getting people out and about. Um, and that's the reason we also wanted to do the clubhouse area so that, you know, people struggle sometimes. If they want to have a, a party for, you know, a birthday party. Um, you know, get the house all taken, and I, my, my niece and my nephew live down Texas. They do the same thing. You know, they're getting the house all ready to go, and they're trying to bring fifty-five people over to a house that's really twelve hundred square feet. Well, it's tough to do. They don't have enough parking, and so we're trying to provide them also an avenue, and I think what uh Bruce, my partner, is a gathering area. Being more to gather, to visit and, and share things. That's really what we want to do within the community.
What is your finished um structure width going to be if you have a thirty um thirty foot lot?
Uh, it'll be stucco.
No, what's the finished width? Is it gonna be twenty foot?
Um, it would roughly about twenty, uh, it would run about twenty feet.
Mm hmm.
Twenty to twenty-two feet, depending on how we do it. But all of our product basically is right at twenty feet.
Is that twenty feet?
Yeah.
What's the depth?
Uh, make a range, depending on what it is. If it's a ranch, obviously, a three-bedroom ranch could be a little bit deeper. It might be sixty, seventy feet deep. Where a two-story may be just basically, you know, twenty, forty feet deep.
What's that depth gonna be?
What's that?
Your total lot.
Um, we'd like to keep it uh the smallest we can by about a hundred, but it's probably ones we have right now are a hundred and ten, two hundred and twenty-five feet deep.
Mm hmm. The, on Thirty Second, um, they've got some housing going up there. Is that part of your project?
No, it would be similar to our, our project, but I'm aware of what they're doing up there, and I've seen it.
Mm hmm.
Um, actually know the principal people that are doing it as well. Um, but yes, it'll be very similar to that.
Okay.
Now, we're gonna do it in a little bit different way. We're trying to deliver it all, and this is what the investor wants us to do, is to deliver them in single family versus doing them as either a duplex or as a, an apartment or a townhome where the people have their own space.
Mm hmm. So that uh monthly payment's gonna be around three grand, though.
No.
Well, I how, how do you figure that? Because I know uh, like my sister, she has a home loan of two hundred and twenty thousand, and she has a four percent interest rate in it with taxes and insurance. She's at about two thousand a month. So now you're talking, we're at six.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, we've, we've done, we've done with the mortgage people, we've talked to them a little bit about, you know, depending on where rates are gonna be, and we've tried to do even projections of rates where they're gonna be next year.
Mm hmm.
Uh, which is probably more of the critical issue of that. Um, there's scuttlebutts that the interest rates are gonna be in four, high fours uh to mid-fives sometime next year. Um, we really, when we looked at the models and talking to the mortgage folks and stuff like that, um, what, now remember traditionally what this is gonna be, this is actually gonna be a conversion model. They're gonna be built to rent first. They're gonna rent them first. They're gonna qualify over a period of five to seven years, and they're gonna be able to switch them into a residential unit at that point in time. And they're going to be able to switch them into a residential unit at that point in time.
It's going to be a rental. And for the investor to get money back, I mean, the rent, you know, is going to be pretty extensive. And then your HOA and so forth, so.
Yeah, our HOA is really not going to be, that's part of the reason why in the design, we're going to create it a lot where the biggest thing, the HOA will be taken care of and managed will be the clubhouse or, or the gathering area. I mean, some of the smaller areas, we're going to try to zero scrape them as much as we can to keep them maintained.
Figuring Jack between two thousand and twenty five hundred a month. You know?
Yeah. And, and that's where really what we're trying to target is right there around that twenty five hundred dollars.
It's a new home. You know, and it's, and it's in a structured neighborhood where we're trying to keep the HOA going and so forth. And, and so you're asking for like a reduction in permit fees, waste.
It's really, you know, we're, I'm looking at it, yeah, the, whatever fees that, that, you know, could be offset. Um, you know, we've penciled this one. It's not really something that, that we need for it, but what, to give you an observation. If you look at it over four hundred and sixty six homes, and let's say that, you know, theoretically that we got one point six million dollars. What that in essence does is reduce the price of a home for per home roughly about, you know, thirty five hundred to four thousand dollars. But you say it's only four thousand dollars, but the retail price of that house in order to be at that thing, same thing, is roughly a reduction in the price of a house about twenty thousand dollars. Now, the difference between twenty two seventy nine and two fifty nine is a whole much difference with a person trying to qualify for that same loan. Um, and that's just really the, the more of the, the nature of the home and building industry. You're very aware of it, um, of how things get priced because really what we do is it's a factor of five. You know, if they cost me a dollar, and this is why sometimes I advocate when I know when I was down in Scottsdale, building down there and they wanted to put sprinkler systems in. So, okay, you're going to put it in there. It's going to cost you, originally it was only five thousand dollars, but it was twenty five thousand dollars by the time we delivered it to the, it, the price to the end user, um, in order to come up with the same percentages. And so, you know, that's where we were looking at this saying, okay, what can we do to assist in keeping that affordability down into the mid two fifties is where we're trying to hit.
Well, I know this, um, when I first came on to council and neighbor works came to the table. Uh, actually what we were, um, led, uh, legislating about was a, uh, increase in wastewater connections. And one of my biggest, um, arguments was, well, how are we to provide, um, affordable housing if we have this connection fee? That's basically was four and five times more than the history um, of how we increase those fees. And at the time, the mayor said, well, we can help people with affordable housing. And then I see we recently just helped Compass Point Apartments with some connection fees. So it'll be interesting on what, you know, um, they come up with and that they want to present to council, you know, um, to see if they can help you out with your affordable.
One of the things, uh, Councilman Stream, that we actually see was the, um, you know, everybody seems to think, you know, like every year we got to have a fee increase, you know, your telephone, it's not, it's like, guys, don't you understand the laws of, of economics? Lower the fee and you might get more people. Might actually create more revenue reducing the price than actually going the other way. Uh, but we looked at it really, what is the return on investment to this, to the city? I mean, the city roughly, once this is built out, four hundred and sixty six units is roughly going to annually, uh, collect about one point four million dollars in taxes between Pueblo, City Pueblo and the County Pueblo. And so when you look at that, if you look and say, okay, we're, we're looking for an ask of really, you know, nearly a third of that, which when you look at your payback, uh, thing is roughly less than a year. It pays for itself to be able to do that because what we're doing is we're putting boxes in residential boxes on the ground that are being taxed by the city and the county to be able to create revenue forever. And so those are the things that we bring up when we're doing it just to, and I know when we were, had our past, uh, mayor, you know, we had a couple of conversations a little bit about that and it took him a while to understand what we meant by return on investment. Um, because truly it is an investment in the, in the, the community and it'll be a, uh, revenue source for the city for basically for perpetuity as long as those houses are there.
Yeah. And that's what I'm just saying is that I've heard it being said by our administration before that we can help with affordable housing. Now, honestly, I can't even tell you what we have in the coffers right now. Um, because we're, we're kind of struggling in the coffers, but reducing fees. That's just going to have to, we're, I guess that's just going to have to be something that our financial and mayor are going to have to come up with and see if they're going to.
You know, what we'd like to do and this is what we're going to do in the near future is begin discussions of really, you know, bring, now that we're ready. Because when we first started this, probably a little, uh, a year or so ago, a couple, well, when we started five years ago, it was a whole different, you know, arena. Now it's kind of changed. Now we're in the driver's seat and we're saying, okay, we're going to drive this boat and try to get these houses on the ground, uh, to provide affordable housing. And what I like about the investor is his commitment to be able to bring these people not only to a rental process, but also convert them over to, uh, ownership over a period of time. Because that's really ultimately what was in the bottom of my heart is I wanted to make sure people had an opportunity to buy a home in their lifetime and create that American dream.
Jack, I want to jump in real quick. So we got three people that want to ask you questions. Uh, Mr. Boss.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I think this is great. Um, it's a lot of needs for the community that are going to be fulfilled. Um, you know, we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago about another developer that wanted to come in and kind of build some multifamily units. And there was large pushback from the community, especially specifically on the west side and several council people as well. Um, I think this is a great thing. I think it's a need of the community. Um, like you said, if you build rooftops, the commercial development comes as well, infrastructure gets improved, a lot of things start to benefit. Um, that community will start to benefit from things like these. Um, but, uh, where specifically is this going to be going on the west side?
This is actually between twenty second and, uh, sixteen street from the Boulevard to Spalding. So it's basically adjacent to Chavisworth to Preparatory Academy.
Okay. So I, yeah, I think this is a, a really good thing. I just hope that we don't get more pushback for projects like these because these are needs of the community.
I think that the thing that we've done and we've, we've made some pretty good inroads with it of, you know, of working with, planning on trying to, you know, to come up with a dialogue of what we need to do ahead of time to be able to do that. And we're looking forward to trying to, you know, put it on the ground.
Councilman Lutino.
Jack, um, the, the HOA. Having, I'm involved with an HOA in Phoenix. And so I, I, I like the process. You'll, you'll, uh, bid it out, get an HOA company to come in and maintain the grounds. And there'll be a, a monthly fee for all those, for that kind of operation. I like that. Thank you.
Council Martinez.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I think just to Counselor Myshu's point about how the city can help. I, I want to say, Jack, three years ago, maybe for ARPA dollars, didn't the city give? Mil, a million?
The one point seven million dollars. Block, yes. Now, however, you can, you keep in mind really what, when that started, when it originally started, it started out as a community development block grant for five hundred and eighty three thousand dollars in total. And then COVID hit and, and it, it was interesting that we went through that process and I look back and we actually got approved. Uh, I think, uh, December of two thousand nineteen. Obviously, we know COVID hit right around February of two thousand twenty. And that basically the cost from there went from five hundred thousand to a million seven to be able to do that. Uh, and I'm very aware of that and really appreciate it because what it did, it accomplished the access to the, the city, the western part of the city through a direct Boulevard, which is Pueblo Boulevard. Um, and, and yes, they, you know, we did, and we also, I also look at the situation of, you know, when we put in the raise grant for the west side, that, you know, I thought originally it was going to be for the west side of Pueblo. What it ended up being was the west side from thirty first to twenty fourth street. I thought it was going to extend down, you know, below that because, you know, um, I look at it this way. We're, you know, the, the biggest concern of any developer and things like that, and I see in other communities in other states, is the, uh, city is responsible for the arterial roads of, of the, the area. And what ends up happening is within that community, all of the spine roads and everything else. But what, what's happened over time, and it's nobody's fault really, but over time, we have fragmented what we've done in the way of our infrastructure. What we're asking at some point in time, we asked even when we, when we had our ARPA funds to begin with, is to make sure that we tighten that up a little bit to be able to make sure that that's less. Because I'll give you an example, one of the other things that the city did for, um, the, uh, church, uh, fellowship of the Rockies Church is if committed, you know, roughly to be able to put in twenty five hundred linear feet of sewer water along Northern Avenue from basically from Ron Colly to Bandera. Um, had that not occurred, the, you know, the opportunity to be able to sell those lots that are in that, uh, Pueblo to Soul Community would not happen. Really what we're in a position right now, because we happen to represent them, um, is we're working on their behalf. Once that gets done, is we actually have the lots all committed and ready to go. Once we know that that sewer is being put in. Um, so, you know, there's, there's ways that I believe that the city makes investments in the community and I hope that that, uh, it's not going to stop us from doing it, but what it does do is it delivers that price from being at two seventy nine to maybe two fifty nine and being able to lower that price of an entry level home.
Yeah, I mean, I understand all of that, but I, you know, I, I do want to note for fellow counselors in the public that we've, the city has already made a substantial investment, uh, for, to the tune of one point seven million.
Also making a very big investment over there for roughly about five million dollars for the road from thirty first street all the way down to twenty fourth street, which is Sun Mountain Road two. I mean, so, you know, we're, I'm not looking at the qualities, whether it's equitable or not. I'm just saying at that point in time, when we started off to do that, that project was really a half a million dollar project that got delayed by COVID that ended up being one point seven million dollars. Um, and so, and that wasn't a nature. I mean, I even, our schools were, you know, went up twice as much to be able to build and I agree with that. But we're just asking the city, consider it, you know, and I'm not saying they, they're do it or they don't, but we're just really trying to look at it from a standpoint of an investment in our community. If we can help reduce pricing to be able to get us to a certain price point where people can, first of all, be able to track them. And I've talked to a lot of the realtors in town. They said, if you give me a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, um, you know, that's fine. It's a lot different in a, a market that's at three fifty to three sixty. Um, because I've, I've talked to the two major builders that are in this city and I know exactly where they're at. Um, but, you know, we're just looking at it from a standpoint of saying, hey, what, what could we do? And if there's something that can be done, we would love to see it done.
President Mark Aliff, we're going to move on.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, thanks, Jack, for the report. You know, the, this is the most frustrating presentation I've ever seen, I, I, I think I've ever had. And let me tell you why it's so frustrating to me and you know why. Because six years ago, I bought into this hook, line and sinker. There wasn't an ARPA meeting that went by. There wasn't a discussion in public meetings where myself, Lori Winter didn't beg, beg to get infrastructure, beg to use ARPA money.
I agree.
Then we get it done. I mean, we got infrastructure put in, in the, in the streets. Uh, and it wasn't just this project, it was also the neighbor works project. I mean, we were working that whole area big time. But we worked so hard as city counselors to put that into place and to, to get those things laid out. And here we are, six years later, neither project has come to fruition.
You're going to see, you know, and, and, and I'm, I'm just as frustrated as you are. I mean, Bruce and I, we've been working at this for about five years, uh, just on this project and it's, you know, much longer than any project we've ever done. Um, but when you really look at the dynamics of what happened with COVID and after COVID and that, um, you know, those, those really created a huge impact. The dynamics changed so much, just basically roughly in eight months, that we're really trying to recover it back to say, okay, how can we do that again? How can we make it happen? And I think you're going to see, even with, and we've reached out to the folks over at, uh, Neighbor Works to say, hey, how can we help? I mean, is there a way that we can actually use our resources or our knowledge or whatever, uh, to be able to help them get this thing off the ground? You know, Bruce and I have talked at length, we don't want the west side to get a black eye because we've got, you know, we received development dollars, we haven't done anything with it. This is why we're committed to making sure that this community gets built. Uh, as I shared, as I shared before, President Olive, is that we being, um, myself, uh, as the developer of owning the land, you know, but I said, five and a half years ago, when all this was happening, we thought we were actually going to be bought out and they were going to be able to deliver. They had the house where it was ready to go. We're doing stuff with North Star Engineering and all of a sudden bam, you know, but when the interest rates went way up and then all of a sudden housing prices went from, you know, I mean, I look at, you know, me building homes back in the day. I, I have a community member that actually bought a home for me, eighty nine nine, recently sold it for three hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars, which is great for them, but it's not really, you know, it's, it's tough to deal with. So I appreciate your sentiments and I appreciate all the efforts that both you and, uh, or Councilman Flores has done as well. And, you know, all of you as a group have done, really supported that west side. And now it's beginning to come to fruition. So I think it's just a matter of time.
Well, I, and I just want to clarify, I know that we talked about the ARPA money for the one point seven or whatever, but there was many more millions of dollars through infrastructure that went in, into that pro, not just that project, but all those projects on the west side. And it's nice to see the housing that's going up, uh, over there by the, uh, Parkview off of that area. But yeah, it's just frustrating. It's frustrating because I know how important the development is. And when you work your, when you work your hind adden off to get it and then it doesn't happen, that's just so frustrating. But I have, uh, faith in you, Jack, and I'm sure, I sure hope that this, this project comes to fruition.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Did I catch it right when you said four hundred and sixty six homes?
We're either going to build six hundred and one homes, which would be a mix of a single family and a roughly about two hundred apart, or two hundred townhomes. That'll be three, you know, basically three stacked of that. Um, but when we started talking, our discussion eight months ago, when we started, uh, visiting with the investor and what he wanted, he basically came to us, he says, my model is I want to convert. I don't want to, you know, because of the, uh, he knew about the apartments and then the other dwellings that are being built over there. And he says, I, I, what I want to do, my model, business model is to compete with a single family residence. Somebody can rent for approximately the same, maybe a couple hundred dollars more a month, but I get a single family of my own where I get my own space. That was his comment to us. And that's why we went in and we re, re, uh, converted it. We're having discussions on Monday with our investor again. Uh, Bruce is actually going out for training with Boxwell on Friday. Um, and we're having a discussion with the investor, trying to wrap it all back up on Monday. Uh, but yes, it's four hundred and sixty six units.
I got one last question. Uh, what's your definition of workforce? Income.
Workforce housing or workforce?
Excuse me, workforce, workforce housing. What's your, what's your definition?
Well, let me get, you know, in the military, it's, it's a little bit different because, you know, they need housing. So they've basically come up with housing. But when I look at it for families, so basically two and three veteran families, um, I have an opportunity in another state uh, to go in and do this right outside of a military base, um, because of not only the model that we've drawn up, but also the, the boxable product in nature, because they can be deliver it in less than, you know, the traditional two hundred and thirty days. Um, because a lot of the military bases are beginning to understand that they want to get the kids, the young families off the base and let them become more of an interactive member of the community. Um, so really what it is, is, you know, when you happen to have, uh, there was a situation, I believe up in the northeast and I can't remember the city where they had, uh, some, uh, companies that were coming in and they didn't have housing for them. So they were actually putting them in hotels. Uh, but they were actually trying to go in and build just basically rentals and stuff like that to be able to build.
So are you, I, just so the way I'm trying to envision this, is would the four sixty six be like a community with it?
No, it's going to be, it's in, within that whole entire community. It'll be a mix within the entire, if I go back here, I'll show you.
Okay. Just curious.
So this is the one here that we were asked to, to convert it just basically to all, um, res, all res, single families. And this is the one where you can see the little clubhouse down here and the townhomes that we have over on the side, which are in those four little blue areas. There's a sixty eight unit component within each of those four little blocks. That we were going to produce. We want to do it as a mix because I feel that's the best way to have a community. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, we've got, uh, the city parking update. And Andrew Hayes, Public Works Director, fifteen minutes.
Chair, Mr. President, members of council, good evening. Uh, I just want to take a few minutes to just give you a quick update on the, um, a few initiatives we're working on parking. Uh, there are three primary areas of town, kind of where we've got some routine or regular kind of interactions with this, with citizens who have concerns about parking or availability of parking. One of those is this area between city center and fourth street. One of these is, uh, around the county, uh, admin building and kind of the campus around there for this county facilities. Now, there's kind of around Parkview. Those are the three primaries where we have, uh, routinely, I guess, had concerns or get the most frequent calls for concerns from citizens. And, uh, we've, we've tried a few different things over the years. We've got a pilot program that's out there for a residential parking program. So I want to talk about that a little bit tonight. And I want to talk a little bit about our parking garages, uh, parking meters and the lots and how this, how this works, just for a few minutes. Um, ultimately, start off here with parking meters. If, if, if you're not familiar, there are twenty six entire parking meters in the city. Um, a few of them are inside the FE, uh, Wiesbadt Garage, uh, and there's a few over on, uh, Third Street as well. Um, the price for those is, uh, currently set at fifty cents per hour. Um, we have a couple of different time zones, time limitations on those, but they are actually still our old style coin operated parking meters. Uh, we have recently implemented a brand new parking enforcement and permitting system that allows us to be able to do an electronic, uh, payment. So, uh, a couple of slides up here, I'll show you what the, what that'll kind of look like. Uh, just a quick graph showing parking meter revenue specifically. So in twenty fifteen or so, it was a little bit over seven thousand dollars a year was, uh, uh, generated. Uh, that dipped way down here in twenty seventeen, stayed pretty low through COVID and then twenty twenty three bopped back up to about four thousand last year, about. Generated. That dipped way down here in twenty seventeen, stayed pretty low through COVID, and then twenty twenty three bopped back up to about four thousand last year, about. Little over three thousand dollars was brought in in coin payments to the parking meters. It still involves parking attendants going out and collecting those coins, bring that in, counting and all of that. One of the concerns again from citizens are, is that they have generally, some people want to park in those spaces, but. People don't bring coins anymore. They much rather have a much more modern update, updated system. So they've expressed concerns very similar to the sentiment expressed here. I mentioned our new digital parking system here where there is essentially a QR code where a user can come up and pay. Much like you've seen on college campuses, in in other metro areas as well. Ultimately, we can also make these signs much more, much less expensively than we can repair those meters when they get damaged, vandalized. And whatnot as well as they wear out. So what we're proposing here is that we replace those parking meters with this text to pay system. This is incorporated into the parking permitting system we already have, so it's not any additional cost for us to implement. Again, we just changed these permitting, these signs to, I'm sorry, the meters to signs so that folks can pay at these. At these locations. It also gives us the flexibility to establish other on-street paid parking zones in the future if needed. One, one challenge with this, of course, is that there's always a payment system. If people are using credit card, we have to have that interaction with the payment vendor. There's a thirty five cent convenience fee per transaction. This is absorbed into the cost that we're proposing here, but. Essentially, what we need to do in order to ensure that we're not costing money every time somebody parks is at least set it up so there are thirty, thirty minute minimum parking. Session. So a user will come in and park, pay their fifty cents, and the thirty first thirty five cents comes out. If they're only there for thirty minutes, it's a pretty small fee that gets collected, but if they stay for an hour, two hours, that. That that's additional revenue there that will come in at the, at that rate of a dollar an hour for on-street parking at those paid zones. Just as a point of comparison here for other cities and what they're doing, most of the other cities do have it set up where the thirty five cent fee or or something similar is. On top of. On top of the the fees charged, but you can see, I guess, that as far as the base rate is concerned from from Colorado Springs. Westminster Grand Junction, they're all in that dollar an hour range at the bottom end. Folks are right now, like I say, paying fifty cents. This is a slight increase for those few parked paid parking spaces are there, but they're also particularly on that third street section. They're the ones that get used the most. So the parking meters obviously allow us to regulate parking there. The biggest. Incentive, I guess, or disincentive is, is to keep traffic moving, provide an incentive for people to come in, get their business done and move on. It allows for turnover of cars in those in those primary spots where folks are desiring to park in front of key businesses and whatnot. Let me switch over to the garages and lots. So we have, actually, I'm gonna talk about five. There's four on this list here, but Main Street Garage, FEW Garage. The Third and Court Lot, Eighth and Court Lot, and we also have a permitted lot at the former PBR Lot, which is now next to the Riverwalk Building. Those are all paid parking lots where we have, were issued permits for people to park. So each one of these is in different location. Main Street Garage, obviously, just right, right across the street here. FEW is right just north of the ice rink. Third and Court is a lot that serves the Pope Block Building and Eighth and Court. Further north is just on the south, just across Eighth Street from the Wells Fargo Building. There's a variety of ways we handle those permits. Some of them are issued by hang tags. Some of them are issued digital permits and are, you know, as as this. System works, you can recognize a license plate and and take care of parking enforcement through license plate recognition. Some of these garages, right, are Main Street Garages, I'm ballparking here, but four hundred, five hundred spaces in that garage entirely. That FEW Garage is probably about half of that, two hundred, two hundred fifty spots. The businesses that have traditionally used those spots have stopped using them. And that was a transition that happened primarily when we started, everybody went home from COVID, started working from home. And we we have not fully recovered with the traffic volumes or parking volumes that we've seen prior to that. Lots of the businesses also had office space, no longer require that. So when they've come back, they haven't necessarily been buying permits in the same volume. Currently, this is kind of our pricing right now, what we have, about thirty dollars a month for uncovered parking spots. That Third and Court spot's a little bit different, thirty five, and the covered parking places, both in the FEW Garage, Main Street Garage are issued at forty dollars per month. Just to, as a point of comparison here for uncovered and covered parking, what this is trying to show is that the orange line at the bottom there, that's very flat, except for the one jump. In two thousand and one, I believe, that is the last time we raised the parking rates in those garages. You can see the blue line, which is this Consumer Price Index, has gone up quite a bit over time here. So where the proposed pricing is that we're talking about is indicated by those red squares, red dots there at the end. So if we adjust our parking fees up here. To fifty dollars a month for the uncovered parking, fifty five for Third and Court and covered at sixty. That puts us in line with just below the CPI increases that have. That have occurred since the, since the last rate increase as well. We're also proposing setting a pricing rate for short term parking. So i- if you wanted to get just a permit for a day. That would be four dollars a day for the uncovered and five dollars a day for covered essentially. Those essentially equivalates, it's equivalent to about twelve days of parking. If you're gonna buy twelve single day permits, you might as well buy the monthly permit. So it it's not. It's in line to, to, I guess, be convenient for folks if they're gonna be parking downtown. But ultimately, they're they're able to park in a covered parking spot for two dollars a day for the month if they were gonna come down here and want a covered, covered parking spot. I mentioned at the beginning, the residential parking program. This is a limited pilot program that has been in place in an area right around Parkview. So back in, I believe it's twenty nineteen, we had a. Program where residents who are parking, residents who live near Parkview in particular. Were having a difficult time because employees and patients at the hospital were were taking up all the parking and sometimes blocking driveways and other things. So there was a residential parking permit program established, which allowed them to have these hang tags. And it it waived them essentially from the time zone limitations that were in place to also keep people moving in the vicinity of the hospital. That program's been pretty successful in terms of, it it's it's eliminated the problems for the residents, but it's also given still. Some space available for, for patients and residents and patients and visitors to the hospital and employees too. There is zoned parking out there. Most of it's two hour parking for the most part around the hospital and there. This, this has been a successful program that has never ever been codified. And so we want to bring an ordinance forward to codify that in municipal code so that this can continue forward from this point. It's not been a charge for it. It's not been a revenue generator. It's just been a way to eliminate conflicts for residents who have very limited parking options right near their. Homes and that have. I guess, limited off-street parking options. So this is again, kind of showing the zone there, a little bit on Fourteenth, but as far north there is Eighteenth and a little bit on Court Street are these areas in question. Where the residential parking permit program has been in place and where we'd like to establish this. Again, it doesn't guarantee a parking spot for residents, but it does encourage again folks to move on and it does allow them to park on the street and stay there if they're. At their home. So I said twenty nineteen, it was twenty sixteen, I'm sorry. And again, there's twenty six residents, twenty six households that are kind of participating in that program. Up to, up to this point. Again, not codified, formalized yet, but we'd like to do that. That concludes my report. It, what I'd like to say, I guess, is that you'll be seeing a couple of changes coming forward here. There'll be a resolution to establish the parking fees. Coming forward as well as, again, the ordinance to change the, or codify the residential parking program. Appreciate your consideration. We're gonna be doing the presentations of those at the second meeting in June, so the end of June is when you'd probably see those. And I'll take any questions you've got.
Council of Main Street.
Okay, so seven thousand dollars on an average a year that we're collecting from the meters.
Less than that. It was about seven thousand dollars in twenty fifteen.
Oh, in twenty fifteen.
Last, last year was around a little over three thousand dollars we collected from those twenty six meters.
Twenty six.
Correct.
So has there been a thought of just? Every other town seems to be charging for parking downtown and stuff. I mean, do you have a plan for that?
We've, so we've talked.
Considered, done a study and seen how much we're going to. Gain from that.
So not in terms of revenue generation, right? Part of what our approach has been is to eliminate or or address concerns that have come up. And we're talking about these three specific distinct zones where we've had the majority of our calls or concerns come from. One, one piece about parking dynamics, particularly in the downtown setting, right? We've got these very underutilized parking garages. And we've got a lot of available on-street parking that is free. There are possibilities here that, you know. They also have, they also have long parking time zones in some cases, right? So you can park in some parts downtown for two hours, four hours. For no charge. Why would you use the parking garage if you you don't have to pay? So getting some revenue generated out of the parking garages, if that's our goal. Could be accomplished too by incentivizing people to park there, buying those long-term month-long permits for two dollars a day. Rather than having to pay a dollar an hour on the street if you wanted to establish paid parking zones. Again, our parking permitting system will allow us to be able to establish the zones very easily, relatively easily. But we can generate those signs and and put QR codes and establish those parking zones anywhere. Anywhere that's managed by the city in the future.
Yeah, because that garage fly across from the ice arena or down by that area, that's a scary place to try to park.
Which, which area were you?
Is it down by the ice arena?
The, yeah, that's a. The garage?
Yeah, that's been a scary place for a long time to try to park. I mean, it's disgusting in there.
So there, there has been, in my fourish years, the, when I got here, it was definitely a place that people kind of avoided. I would say that there have been a lot of increased patrols in that area. There's also quite a bit more activity at the ice.
Has there been a power washer in there to clean that place up? It's dirty.
They've been into, I know that the elevator has been closed, which was kind of an attractive nuisance. So all the accessible parking is down on the ground level. Again, it's underutilized, so there's been. The ability to accommodate everybody on that bottom deck, for the most part. The top deck is still there if it, if you do have an event that's larger. But we've, we've been working there and and I think the increased patrols have certainly helped. There are still folks that come down there and leave trash and hang out overnight. But in general, I think that they've been moved on from, from those areas when, when, when there's been a nuisance.
Yeah, I like to see, I mean, it's, obviously, we're looking for ways to generate revenue and, you know, down. Colorado Springs, all the little cities, they have. Paid parking.
Right.
Whether it's parallel or whatever, along the business districts.
And it, it's, I guess, I didn't specify it at the beginning too, but the city does have a parking enterprise that is. So the the fees that go into the enterprise are generated by the services provided, so the parking permit fees. And the parking meter revenues go into that enterprise. They pay for our parking enforcement services. So they resource our parking enforcement officers, their uniforms, their vehicles and equipment, the new parking permit system. So it's important that we get the revenue stream right.
Because otherwise, I think the way it sounds, we've probably been in, operating in the red. I would think.
In the last few years.
Yes, and our, the enforcement system is probably costing us way more than we're generating. So how do we?
Well, we've had a parking system the entire time, so it's partially subscription based. We do pay an annual fee for the support that we get from there. But buying the equipment, the the older system certainly had, became equipment intensive, and so we'd buy new printers and buy new handheld.
I, what I'm talking about is the, the personnel, their expenses, their uniform, that, all of that. Is outweighing what we're bringing in.
Right. So last, last year, for instance, twenty twenty four, we had three thousand, just a little over three thousand dollars coming in on the meters. And we had about thirty seven thousand dollars, thirty eight thousand dollars generated in permit sales. As compared to two thousand fifteen, it was almost a hundred eighty thousand dollars in permit sales and seven thousand dollars in in meter fees. So it's kind of a difference in the peak and the current.
And what's the cost of the, of the operating cost?
Yeah, we have one full-time employee, we have. One part-time employee and the, we haven't, we haven't bought a new vehicle or anything for them. They're, they're, they're. For lack of a word, the trikes that they they use to ride around on, and they've got at least one four-wheeled vehicle that is used to enforce. The biggest expense most in the recent years has been the changeover of the parking enforcement system and the equipment for the license plate recognition, ticket issuing stuff. And printers and that sort of thing.
But you can't tell us the actual number.
I don't have that number right in front of me. Although, I'll check, double check.
Well, because I think, you know, in this case, we need to address and try to see how we could turn that back around.
My, my point, I guess, was addressing that, when, when you mentioned raising revenue, it's just not something that's gonna go right back into the general fund. It would go into that parking enterprise. But it is, is certainly still necessary to make sure that our revenue stream balances with the costs.
Yeah, that's, and that was my understanding of it. Just, you know, are we doing enough to to put it back in the black?
Right.
That's, that's mine. I mean, because if we're gonna do it, our goal is to put it back in the black.
I, I think that there will be some opportunities to discuss this a little bit further, particularly when the heart renovations are done, we start talking union to main. And all those changes are finished up and figure out what the on-street parking situation looks like. Again, we still have an awful lot of off-street parking, both off-street and on-street parking that is free right now. That drives underutilization of our garages. So there are, there are ways to, I think, increase some revenue here. We certainly don't want to prevent people from coming down here or anything like that.
Are the violations being credited to the enterprise?
I don't believe so. I think the, the violations do not. Permit sales do, and the more parking meter sales do.
But not the, not the.
Violations, I believe, go through the court, and so they go back into general fund.
Council Flores.
I, I wanted to, I wanted to talk about the actual meters themselves. Or the process in a larger parking lot. I've, I've seen both systems, but are we changing meters?
So this would change those.
Or whatever, so that you could use a card.
Essentially, but you wouldn't even have to break out your card because there's no, nowhere to swipe it. You'd be actually on an app on your phone. Or scanning, scanning a QR code on the sign in the parking zone that you're in to be able to bring up a website that you could pay through. But you'd be using an online application to be able to make those payments. So.
Yeah. What about people that don't? Understand that technology?
Right, and right now, we're only talking about twenty six spots.
Okay.
And so, I mean, this is limited again to where the parking meters currently are. If we decide to expand that. You know, those are considerations we need to have to have maybe alternate forms of payment or alternate ways to access those.
So the parking lot by the Wells Fargo Building, you'll, you'll have, it'll be numbered, it will, there'll be a central place where. They're gonna swi- be able to swipe a card.
Well, right now, there's, those are, those are permitted parking spots. People can go online and buy a permit for that either by the day or by the month. Again, we can issue hang tags there. It depends on the business and their arrangement, but we've got, we've got an arrangement with the DA's office to use the Eighth and Court Parking Lot. For instance, they've bought a certain number of hang tags. Their offices are right there, located nearby, so they use that lot, but they pay for those permits on a monthly basis. If somebody individually decides they want to park somewhere in one of our permitted lots, they can also individually go on and buy a permit for their vehicle as well.
Just one last thought, and that is the, the parking lot the Convention Center uses, you know, when it was first built. They had the, the whole system where you pressed a button, got a ticket. It became such a hassle after a while. That they just took, and the arms were constantly being knocked off.
Right.
So they, they gave up and they said, this parking structure is now, there's no charge for most functions. And it turned out to be an actual moneymaker because. The people that come to conventions and stay at the hotels, they love the fact that they don't have to pay for parking. If you go to Denver Springs and you have a convention at a large hotel, the room rate. Almost every hotel now charges ten dollars a day as a parking fee.
Right.
And so, but anyway, it turns out that the Convention Center is actually getting business as a result. Of not charging this parking fee. It makes it more palatable to people that come to Pueblo. Not to have another ten dollar fee or whatever is charged. So sometimes it works in reverse and. And being flexible like that, in the, in the large parking structure.
And that particular garage facility is not operated by the city. That one's operated by Urban Renewal Authority. It's under their charge, but they have, as you said, opened it up and obviously folks can park there twenty-four seven for free. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thanks.
Okay, I think we're good, Mr. Hayes. Thank you.
Thank you.
For it. Next up, item agenda E is City Council Boards and Commissions Update. Okay. Council Martinez.
Yeah, I can start us off. So one of the boards that I sit on is the Latino, the, the, the Latino Chamber Board of Directors. As an ex officio, they have a lot of updates as a board. One. One, they recently wrapped up their 2025 Latino Leadership Development Institute of Pueblo Program. So it's a six weeks, it's a six, six-week program. This year, they had 13 participants and they hosted each session of the program in a different venue. And actually, two city employees participated in the program this year, including our very own city clerk, Marissa Stoller. So that's kind of exciting. So far this year, the Latino Chamber has presented about 15 welcomed business certificates to new businesses that have opened an official brick and mortar business. Essentially, what happens is that they review the city's business registration lists each month and then go and like welcome those businesses to Pueblo and like congratulate them on, you know, opening a, a brand-new business, which is helping our local economy. They are hosting their fifth annual 40 Under 40 Awards on this month, Saturday, June 14th, at CSU Pueblo Ballroom. There are still tickets if you are wanting to go. I know that council has a table that we're trying to fill up. So always important to go cheer on our couple of award winners. And they recently launched a Raise a Village fundraising campaign. So they have a goal to have 1,000 people donate $10, which are going to have the funds be used for programming, operations, and then membership resources. So that's a new kind of capital campaign or fundraising campaign that they're kicking off. And very cool that they're going to soon welcome the Pueblo Punishers, a new pro-arena football team to Pueblo. And it's going to be one of their tenants in the actual building at the Latino Chamber Building. And that is the Pueblo Punishers.
Okay.
That's all.
Council Flores, you have any?
Yeah, I, I, I'm on four different boards. The first one that I want to talk about is Pedco. Currently, the, the, the goal is to have a ballot issue and.
Currently, we're having meetings off and on.
Every two or three weeks. And we're looking at changing the criteria ordinance and also maybe the ballot language tweaking that in some, in some sense. So I think in the near future, we'll be having a work session or an actual first reading on what the criteria ordinance will look like and what the ballot issue will look like. So that's the big item right now with Pedco. PACOG, we just recently had a meeting and there is a, a new renewed interest, I guess, in roundabouts. So the, the state has put together a flyer indicating how roundabouts should be used. And we've got, I think we've got four of them now, and I think there's two yet to be built. The one that was just finished was the one on Berkeley and Mesa, not Berkeley and Mesa. It was on Jackson, Adams and Jackson. And then there's a couple over the Dillon Flyover. And I guess the, they're working on the City Park, which is really the only roundabout that we have forever. And, but there's still one on Berkeley and Mesa. And then the, the really one that I caught my eye is the one on Orman and Lake. That is a really dangerous place right there. So that's, that's on the drawing blocks. PACOG, we got an interesting report at our last PACOG meeting. A, a firm was hired by the state called Dyaxis, Dyaxis. And this company is doing a deep dive into all of the roads in the community and identifying all of the dangerous areas in Pueblo that are identified by accidents and other things. And at one point, they will be providing information as to areas that can be fixed with very little cost. And then obviously, there'll be others that will be, they'll be in more expensive. But anyway, it's, it's in progress and at some point, we'll have a, a complete report on that. And then I'm on the Front Range Passenger Rail District. They've opened what's called an open house online. If anybody's interested on the progress of Front Range Passenger Rail, you can go online on their website. And there'll be a, an actual link that is called an online open house. And you can kind of look at the analysis that's been, that's been developed at this point, alternatives and any, and how the future train service will look. So we're in the middle of all of that right now. And let's see, PURA, we did have a recent meeting, as was mentioned earlier. And 400,000 was authorized to purchase a piece of property, the old Stein, the old Stein property. It's, it's a very, it's a half a block. And at 400,000, it's a, it's a real steal and, and a real amazing price that I think was given by the Steins who own that property. They, they accommodated, I think they lowered the price because the art center was wanting to extend over into that area. And that's all I have.
Council.
I serve on the Pueblo Regional Building Board. They, we did get a new chief, chief official. And we've had him for about two years. And so, you know, improving policies and procedures have taken place. And their big exciting thing now is they're going to renovate their office building. And so they sent us some plans to take a look at. And they're, it's going to be a really nice renovation. So looking forward to seeing how that's going to transpire over the next few months. And looking forward to seeing that final product. And that's about it for right now.
President.
Thank you, Chair. Council Flores and I both serve on Pedco. He pretty much went over everything that is happening there. I would like to add though, there's, we've been updated on several prospects. And I think they're working hard to try and get some things that they can announce here pretty soon. The Riverwalk, the Riverwalk is very, very busy. They recently put out a request for proposal on two lots down on the, where the current offices are. Because when the boathouse is finished, they'll vacate those offices. And hopefully, we get a killer business down there to come in. David Busters, if you're listening, the RFP is out and you can certainly apply. Again, the Riverwalk is very busy. I want to remind everybody, the 7th of June, movie nights on the Riverwalk. Get started. The, the 8th is Pueblo Toyota Discount Day. So you can go down there, get on the boats and save some money. June 9th through the 8th of August, they have fitness on the Riverwalk, which is a big deal, right? Dog Days of Summer starts 18th of June. That's a community dog walk. I know everybody likes to do that. And don't forget, July 4th, the rolling on the Riverwalk, big, big party down at the Riverwalk. And I hope that you guys all get down there to celebrate. The boathouse is coming along quite nicely. I don't know if you've driven by there, you can, you, you see the walls are getting up and it's taking shape. And it's, it's very, very nice. And that's all I have.
Council Brett Boss?
Sure.
So for Pedco, changing the criteria ordinance for the ballot, for the, for the ballot measure. I know that Mayor Graham's talked several times about possibly changing that criteria ordinance. Is that the same conversation or are those different?
Yes, and there is a work session scheduled for the 16th, isn't it? Work session scheduled on the 16th. And I think first reading on the ordinance is the same 9th, is on the 9th.
For the criteria order?
Yes, so there'll be first reading on the 9th, a work session on the 16th, and we will vote on the 23rd.
And then it's a separate process for the ballot question?
Yes, two separate things.
There, you're good. You want anything to add? You good? Okay, Brett Boston, Council Boston.
Thank you, Chair. So the boards I sit on, planning and zoning, lots of exciting things going on in planning and zoning. There's some big new developments coming to the southwest side of town, hopefully. City Council is still waiting to approve those, but they have passed through planning and zoning. So be on the lookout for some new fun, exciting things coming to City Council. And for the HARP Foundation, we only meet quarterly. But when it comes to HARP, echoing some of Councilman Aliff's things that he was talking about, we should have those festivals on the Riverwalk with live music, fun, open consumption, things like that, coming here this summer. So look forward to those and watch out for those dates. When it comes to PURA, Councilman Flores kind of already talked about that. We talked about it at the beginning of the meeting as well, what was going on with that. I hope that we can hopefully get that RFP filled for those two lots and then hopefully do some more fun expansions down in that area as well with some of the funds we get from that. And then PACOG, I got to the pleasure of running that first meeting. And as Councilman Flores always already echoed, the traffic safety study that was provided, the presentation that was given was very detailed. They gave us a lot of ideas. It would cost a lot of money. But some of the ideas they gave us were inexpensive, and I think they could be good benefits to the community. Help fix signal timings, help fix public safety for drivers and pedestrians both. So hopefully, we can try to find some funds and some grant funding to help fix some of those high-problem areas and make our streets safer. And that's all I have for my board updates.
Council Latino?
Nice question.
Sure.
Sorry.
All right, Council Martinez.
For PURA, so I finally just read that email that was referenced earlier. And for PURA, talking about that property right off Forest Street, I'm wondering, does that connect to the Rojas Building?
No, it's across the street.
I know, but is the plan to do something with the Rojas Building? Because it is, I mean, like they're parallel off of Fort, you know what I mean, off Forest Street.
The, the Rojas Building is owned by the county, so we're not involved in that at all.
And there's no current plan for the other property that was just loaned $400,000 to pretty purchased.
During the staff report, there, there, I guess I'm confused. There's no plan for the property?
There's proposals, but there's no set plan. They don't know if they're going to build offices.
I think, you know, what we're going to settle is, is you brought up the idea of having a work session on this.
I think.
I think we really need one.
I know, I just read the email, so I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I think we should set one up for sure. Okay.
Yeah, you should definitely set up a work session with PURA.
Yeah, I, I think that that would be great. And as, I mean, even doing the PURA tour earlier this year, there was no mention of the, of that specific property on the PURA tour. So I look forward to that work session. And then when Mr. Thurston and those developers came in last week or the week before, they were referencing PURA and the, you know, the bonds in the Highway 50, or not Highway 50, Pueblo Boulevard corridor. Did they ever go to PURA? Like, is that a conversation in PURA about the developers on Pueblo Boulevard?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there's supposed to be money in that TIF district to help with these projects. And that, there should have been enough to fund this, but they use the money from that TIF district to fund their administrative, administrative expenses. So that district is paying to staff PURA rather than paying to develop that district, correct?
The majority of that district's money is paid is for PURA's administrative costs.
So that district isn't able to help itself do those things to help those developers because they're using the money to help them?
There, there is a remainder of funds every year in that district that they use for their demonstration projects. But we've been working closely with PURA to try to address the problems on the Boulevard. And I know PURA has been working with the developers that came. I actually have a meeting with them tomorrow.
The developers or PURA?
The developers. So I provide counsel with an update after we sit down and talk. I know that they've been having discussions with PURA, so once we meet with them, I'll send you guys an email.
Councilman Florence and then Councilman Latino.
I just wanted to say that there's a lot more to this story. I mean, the, the Lake Avenue PURA District has been around for a while. That whole corridor, you will see lights, grass. And, and they've also helped several buildings replace their roofs on Lake. So there's, we do need a work session on this because there's more to that story and, and about the administrative costs than meets the eye.
Councilman Latino?
Thank you. Yes. Some of you may well be aware that we now have in the old Patty's Restaurant, the Capital Grill. And I went to the grand opening of that and they're doing really well and I'm excited about that. We got a vacant building that once was a very prominent restaurant, shaking and moving again. And on, in addition to that, over on Bradford and Forest Street, the old Dollar Tree building is now occupied by Evans Gonzales and is now a supermarket called Gonzales. And he has groceries there and I've visited with him and he's a young man, excited. He's came from Santa Fe, New Mexico, and, and it's, it's really something exciting. In addition to that, we're moving along with our grocery store and, and multipurpose area over on 10th Street and, and on the east side. We're working at that to, to bring a grocery store with a coffee shop and a recreation area with a, with a, an indoor facility for events and a playground area. And thanks to the Urban Renewal Authority and, and Mr. Pacheco and his staff, we're working on taking down a couple of the houses that have been tormented, for lack of a better word, with the homeless and, and the fires that they've created in that area. And those two houses will be taken down shortly. And the neighbors in that commune were just ecstatic. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna just wrap up with some real quick. I agree with Councilman Flores that I'm going to get Terry Hart in here just to reference the CDOT updates. Because when we go to PACOG, he gives an awful lot of stuff. He's pretty well-versed on it. So I'm gonna see if we can get him in here. Also, I'll work on the June 23rd for the Stein Property PURA District prospects and all that for the 23rd. Because that's all I got open. And then just want to report, and this is, I brought this up at PACOG. I was concerned with Hyde Park when they came forward with their traffic problems with the school and more cars going to the area, a lot of kids trade racing through there. So I had brought up the idea of what they did on the corner of Orman and Mesa where they put a four-way blinking stop corner there. Three weeks, they got it done. I'm not making this up. City got in there, kicked butt on it. And I'm going to make a crazy proposal. If, if the schools' attendants and people that are participating in these schools that are, still have attendance levels they can meet, that we should really consider looking at having a four-corner stop at every one of those corners. We start with elementary or whatever, middle schools if we can. But when I saw that response from the city, I was blown away. So finally going to end up with some good news. Other than that, I think we are good. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Boston.
Can I just make a recommendation if you bring Terry Hart and do a CDOT work session? We do it on a work session night, not a meeting, regular meeting night. Just because I feel like that would be a long discussion that would definitely bleed into our regular meeting.
And the 23rd, is that a, is that a, ooh, that, is that a, both meetings or one?
That's a great one.
Okay, I'll, I'll work it out where it's just one, one of the work sessions. Other than that, I think we're good and we're adjourned.